Call to order, the April 7th meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee. At this time, I would ask those who so choose to rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Good to see you. Um, so let me see, we have Mary with us and Amy and I got Mike, I got Sharon.
Do you have Leah?
Oh, there she is. Hi Leah. Yeah, I got her now. Leah, so just missing Rich, I'm sure he'll, he will show up. So, no citizens comments this evening. And so, we will go right to unfinished business, and that is the mascot update. So I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Brooke.
Great, thank you so much. So, Tanya, Rich is with us tonight. She's going to do a broad stroke overview and basically kind of give you, just remind you of the chronology of the type of timeline that we've been through since you decided to retire the chieftain as mascot. She worked very closely with her consulting, so, and they were fantastic to deal with. Tanya and Steve just did an amazing job. They, they, they worked overtime on this. And so, tonight, they come forward and they say, okay, we're kind of at the end of this part of our journey, and this is where we've landed. And I think she's just going to chronologically go through everything, and then we'll, we'll see the recommendations. So, with that then, and I know Matt Biggs is here as well, so Matt, welcome to you. Appreciate you being here as part of the Advent team. So, Tanya, we're going to turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. And I'm just going to share my screen, make sure this works.
And it did.
Excellent. That's always a plus.
Yes, it is.
Alright, so thank you all for having me this evening to give a quick update on where we are at the mascot. Like Brooke just mentioned, I'm going to give you a quick overview and then kind of go into our recommendation to the committee. So first off, just the quick look at the timeline of where we all started. So, back in July, it's when the school committee decided that we were going to retire our chieftain mascot, which then followed up that fall where we made that partnership with Herd, who, as you know, Superhand Clutchy said, Herd has been fantastic to work with. Jake has been great. He answers all of our questions. He's been wonderful the whole way. He also mentioned that going through this process, he used a lot of what we've done at Neshoba with the other five schools that he's worked with. So that made me feel pretty good, too. Um, next thing we did was, in December, we had an initial survey that went out to all of our stakeholders, and that survey was asking for, you know, any ideas, any feedback on what the new mascot could be. In that survey, we got about fourteen hundred responses of every possible name you could think of. Then in January, Herd analyzed those results and provided a list to our committee to start looking at. In February, we had student voice sessions for middle school and high school. And then in March, we sent out a final mascot survey, which gave two options and asked for people to choose their preference of a mascot. So, first I just want to go over who the mascot committee was composed of. So, the committee was composed of administrators, high school and middle school teachers, coaches, alumni, and high school students. And I want to make a note that the high school students that were on the committee, we had four students, and they covered at least one or more of the following groups and activities in our school: athletics, band, drama, student council, class officer, and the EMT program. So, we were looking for students that covered many different activities that we have at the high school. So, back in that initial survey in December, Herd analyzed the survey results, compiled a list of viable mascot names based on the frequency of suggestions on the survey, and then presented them to our mascot committee. And these are the names that were presented to us. It's important to note that Herd was mindful of surrounding high schools' rival mascots, our middle school mascots, and that also eliminated some of the names that were possible. Herd also listed their top three recommendations from the final list to our committee. And then our committee reviewed all of these names and came up with two possible finalists that we thought of. So, just quickly looking at this list, and Herd gave us this list with their comments to go with them. So, quickly, Apples, Storm, Moose, and Narwhals, they mentioned where, they got some mentions, you know, under ten, Narwhals got thirty-nine. But these are more like cutesy names and just okay. They weren't true viable mascot names, they felt. Then we look at, you know, Knights and Warriors. Again, they sounded pretty good, but Herd advised us, you know, we don't want to depict a cultural group, or those two names could go down, you know, the same kind of path we were with the chieftain. So, we wanted to stay away from those two names. Then we get into our Eagles, our Hawks, our Nighthawks. And again, we're talking about Sawyer Eagles, the Hail Hawks, but then we also have the Hudson Hawks, the Milford Hawks. So, those are names that were around, and Nighthawks was very close to Hawk. So, we're trying to stay away from those as well, mainly because of our middle schools and surrounding area schools. Um, Norrester and Storm, they were kind of a different, you know, mascot suggestion. Um, we actually liked the alliteration of Neshoba Norrester, but then we weren't sure if it could really tie to the community that well. Um, and actually, somebody brought up, like, or Norrester sometimes could pull communities apart, depending on how bad a storm could be, and we're looking for something right now to pull our community back together. Um, so, I start here, the three suggestions that Herd recommended as finalists. And those were Bears, Bobcats, and Wolves. Um, they felt like Bears was a strong, solid name, given our location. They thought Bobcats, you know, made sense. It's one of those big cats. Um, but they also mentioned that there are many big cat schools in the area. Tigers, Panthers, Lions, we've got West Boylston Lions, Tingsborough Tigers, Maynard Tigers, Marlborough Panthers. So, you know, that was, you know, kind of in the middle. And then Wolves, um, actually, there were over two hundred and thirty suggestions in the initial survey for Wolves. Um, so that was the clear choice, the community, in this first survey. And it was actually Herd's number one suggestion as well. So, you know, as this list came to our committee, we went through this, and this is the list that we worked off of to come up with our finalist names. So, the finalist recommendations that we had were Golden Bears and Wolves. Again, the committee discussed all the options, and these were our recommendations. And we felt that going with an animal name was safe in this process as well. Um, again, we got rid of the word Bobcats because we felt like it was too close to the other cats in our area. And the world, the word Golden was added to Bears to try to tie in the school colors of Vegas Gold. Um, and again, Wolves was a top recommendation out of the survey and also a suggestion. So, next up, we held our student voice sessions in February. And the committee held these sessions for high school and middle school students. Um, and what we did is we collected feedback on each name, and we also asked the students what they were proud of as being a high school student, or what they were looking forward to, to becoming a high school student from our middle school session. Um, I'm not going to read all these comments. These comments were in the memo in the survey that we sent out in March. Um, but I do want to note that these are all direct quotes from the students. Um, we collected all their, their notes in a Jamboard. And so, these are all direct quotes from the students who attended these student voice sessions. So, next up was our final mascot survey, and this was in March. Um, this survey was shared with stakeholders via email, social media, and on the NRHS website, and was open for two weeks in March. Um, over those two weeks, we received over two thousand responses, which I thought was fantastic. Um, as you can see from this graph, eighty-four percent of the people who responded were in favor of Wolves, and sixteen percent were in favor of Golden Bears. Um, so, the committee used these survey results to help inform us on what we wanted to recommend for our next mascot. So, our committee used information from our final mascot survey, um, which also aligns with the initial survey where Wolves was the number one suggestion. And our committee is recommending this evening to the school committee that our new mascot be the Neshoba Wolves. Um, and like I said, this lined up through all of our surveys and all of our sessions that we held. And kind of looking forward at our next steps, so, assuming we move forward with our new mascot, we'll be working with Herd, and they'll be creating visual identifiers for this mascot. Then our committee will work with Herd to create a final survey for our high school students to indicate a preference on logo designs. We're hoping that Herd can narrow, and we can narrow it down to three different logos that we put out in a survey, and we ask our high school students to give us their preference. Which one? Is it, you know, a wolf that's smiling? Is it a, kind of, is it one, is it a howling wolf? Is it, you know, kind of growling? Like, what are the different things we're looking for here? And this is again, Herd will do all these graphics for us, and we'll share them with our high school students in one more survey to get input from our students. Then Herd will work with our committee, and they'll develop an entire suite and a brand guide for the high school. So, numerous, maybe there could be just a wolf head, maybe there's someone that says Neshoba Regional with a wolf logo. Um, they're all different options, and, you know, we're not changing our school colors. So, this would all be in our green and our Vegas gold. Um, and like I said, they come up with the entire logo suite and brand guide. That goes down to even fonts and different things that will look good, embroidered, screen printed, on letterhead, how, you know, everything we'll need moving forward. This is what Herd will provide us. And one more thing that we're going to do is, um, our committee is looking forward to working with Mr. Andriopoulos, one of our business teachers and students in his marketing class, to come up with a name for our student fan section and a logo to represent that fan section. And this is something we've been doing over probably the last six or seven years, um, as I've been AD, is, you know, I work with the students and figure out, you know, what do you want to call yourselves? What do you want, like, our fan t-shirt to be this year? What is the logo going to look like? We have designs each year. So, I'm looking forward to having our committee working with more students and coming up with some more surveys and ideas and asking more high school students for some input in this last, part of, this part of, you know, what our student fan section will be and how we'll move forward. Um, and the last thing I just want to say, like I said, I wanted to be quick, so I wasn't taking up all your time tonight, um, is, you know, we've mentioned this in the memo too, but I feel like some of these discussions this year have definitely been a little bit heated and have caused some division with different groups in our community. But, our committee is definitely hopeful and confident that we can all continue to overcome these challenges, continue to work together, and now move forward with a mutual respect for all these opinions and ideals moving forward. You know, our students are strong and resilient, as we all know, as we're dealing with everything that's happened over this last year. And I'm proud of the students that have been involved in the numerous levels of this process. The students that were on our committee, the students who attended the student voice session, or the students who've completed the surveys and the brainstorming survey in our initial December invite. And I think, you know, moving forward, we're just excited that, you know, we could have a new mascot, and we can start celebrating a new beginning with all members of our community and moving forward and coming back to that community that we all love here at Neshoba. So, at this, I will stop sharing, go back to the screen, and go from there. So...
Thank you so much, Tanya. I'm sorry, Brooke, did you have something else? Oh, Steve, hi Steve. Steve wants to say something.
I just wanted to thank Tanya and the entire committee for all the hard work they put in this. It was, it was a lot more involved than people realize, and, and they did, they, they really worked very hard to keep this as, as even keel as possible. So, thank you to Tanya, and thank you for all the folks who are involved, from teachers to, to students to other, other folks that wrote there. So, thank you, guys.
And Kathy, I was going to basically say the exact same thing. I, I just, I know how much work has gone into this. I know the number of meetings we've had, the number of meetings you've had, you know, the, the number of times that you've met separately with Herd. And Herd, again, has been amazing, um, and, and doing this pro bono. I mean, we're, we're, we're just really delighted to have had them as a partner in all of this. So, I, I think, Tanya, though, to you, a special thanks, because you took the lead on this, and you've just done an amazing job. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any questions for Tanya, or Steve, or John, or Janine, or Matt? Elaine?
Um, well, first and foremost, just thank you. Um, thank you to Tanya and Steve, and everyone who was in the selection process for coming together with professionalism and maturity, open-mindedness, and clearly, obviously, a very genuine love for the school. I know that doing the quote-unquote "right" thing often means a lot of work, and it's really difficult. Um, and so, I just commend you for coming together to do all of that in what is already a really difficult year. Um, I just want to say, as to the Wolves, I think it's awesome. I love it. The quotes from the students, I think, said a lot about the positive attributes of a wolf or of Wolves. But yeah, they're fiercely loyal. They stand up for each other. They protect each other. They have incredible stamina. Uh, Wolves have incredible work ethic, um, and they're really intimidating. Like, a wolf can complete their hunt before you even knew you were the prey. And that's, that's so badass to me. You don't need a big roar. You don't need big claws. Wolves are intimidating, and I, I think that's awesome. So, congratulations. No questions.
Other questions or comments? Um, Sharon?
Well, I just want to add my voice to the list of people saying thank you, thank you to you, Tanya, and to your team for all the hard work to make this happen. This is an incredibly challenging task and would have been a monumental task even in a normal year. And this has certainly not been a normal year. And change is hard. Change is hard, but it's important, and we'll get, we'll get behind this and we'll get together. And so, um, yeah, I can't, I don't have any other eloquent words to say, except thank you for being awesome. And, uh, I'm looking forward to my daughter joining Neshoba as a Wolf next year.
Any other questions before we move, make a motion? Um, Elaine, do you want to make the motion? Oh, Steve, did you want to say something?
No, that's alright.
Okay. So, Elaine, would you make the motion, please?
Uh, sure. Um, I move to accept the recommendation to approve the Neshoba Regional High School mascot as the Neshoba Wolves.
Can I have a second?
I second.
Second. Any questions or comments? Mary?
I just want to join in the chorus of applause for Tanya, for everybody who worked on this, um, for being able to work with Herd, and, uh, so that the, you know, that they did it pro bono, um, and to take such, um, a hot topic in a way, and I think it was mentioned, the professionalism that everyone showed, and to help Neshoba to, this, you know, a district that we all love so much, to be able to move forward. So, I just want to add my, my voice to those, the accolades, especially this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Uh, Leah?
So, I think that a lot has been made by some about the cost. So, I don't think anybody is in disagreement about the change. Obviously, we voted unanimously to do so, but the cost has still been kind of floating out there. I don't know that we've had anybody kind of delineate that for us. Any, um, understanding of the cost, or, or is that a different conversation, Kathy?
I think at this point, um, we, we approve it, and then I, we could bring it forward for a more detailed conversation. I know that there has been some preliminary, um, um, work done, but I, I think that, uh, Tanya can come forward at a later date with more details about what was happening moving forward. They're in the process now, from what I understand of. Um, the next step is to really identify the logo, um, and, and, and move forward with that. So, we'll get to that, um, in a future date, Leah. Okay? Anybody else? Amy?
Yeah, I just had a question about, um, and this is more about the future process, about whether the, um, the next steps will reach out to rising ninth graders and middle schoolers, you know, in terms of logo development and whether, how to, how to include them in the process, since they are the future of Neshoba. And they are the future Neshoba Wolves, assuming the committee is going to vote yes on that tonight. So, I don't know, Tanya, one of those four students included a middle schooler, or maybe a rising ninth grader? Or whether they're even going to be involved in the next step?
Well, the four students were high school students. Um, if I remember correctly, they were sophomores and juniors. Yes, they were sophomores and juniors. And again, we're going to be working with Mr. A's marketing class. Obviously, we haven't had that conversation of what that process is going to look like exactly, because we needed to make sure we had a new mascot before we had that conversation with the, the students. This is the first that anybody has heard what the recommendation was going to be. So, moving forward, I'll be meeting with that, with those students in the class and Mr. A, you know, figuring out what that process will be.
I think we need to take this i- in incremental steps. I think this is a huge step tonight, and I think we'll, the other steps will find their way.
Any other questions or comments? I just want to say, um, Tanya, you just have been, and I, I've known Tanya since she was fourteen years old. And now that she's twenty-five, she's just, has been consistently excellent for, for all those many years. But your, your leadership, your commitment, the care that you bring to everything you do, your commitment to the kids, to the school, uh, to the school culture, to our core values, is just outstanding. And, and I so appreciate your time and dedication. Um, and, and I, I can't thank you enough for the, the work, your leadership in this regard, and the other folks at the high school, Steve and John, Janine, and, and Matt, and, and the, the faculty and, and students who contributed to this. Um, I have to say, I, I was very happy to hear that Herd took ideas that Neshoba generated to share with five other schools that they're working with. So, that is just another indication of how, um, Neshoba is, uh, just to cut above. So, thank you. Thank you so much. Um, if there are, if there are no more questions or, uh, comments, I am going to call the vote. Okay. Um, Joseph?
Yes.
Oh, wait, wait, I got to do the motion again. Gee, I think I know how to do this by now. Hang on. Okay. So, the motion on the table is to accept the recommendation from the Neshoba Regional High School Administration to approve the new Neshoba Regional High School mascot as the Neshoba Wolves. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Oh, woo! Yes.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
So be it. We are the Neshoba Wolves. Thank you so, so much. And we'll be really excited to see the logos and, um, and all, all the new things that come forward with it. And, and you'll keep us posted in terms of, of costs. Um, I know that early on, um, I heard from people who would express an interest in making contributions to any changes that needed to be made. So, um, keep us posted about that as well.
Will do. I, like you said, I have actually had a few people reach out that do want to make donations towards items. So, you know, that'll be a great help to this process as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And where's Teddy? Did Teddy go? I saw his little head when we started.
Yes, he was here for a few minutes, but now he's off, uh, I think getting ready for bed.
Don't want to get in the way of that. Okay, good. Um, alright, thank you. So, um, the next item, uh, is under new business, and that's a review of the high school, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two handbook. So, I'm going to hand it to Brooke. Can you can?
Sure, and I'm actually going to turn it over to Steve, and this just follows the process that we've been taking for the last couple of years, where we're just bringing you the key ceiling and changes that we're looking at. And there aren't really many changes that we were looking at this year. So, Steve, with that, I'll turn it over to Principal Colanane.
Thank you, Brooke. Um, yeah, I, I, we really didn't make any changes. We, we kind of wrote down the, what we had talked about last year in regards to the restorative justice type, type, um, discipline. And, uh, Matt Biggs has done a wonderful job with the, using the circles and things like that. Um, so, we just kind of, we, we, we tried to write that in a little bit better. I'm, I'd rather have Matt and Janine explain it, because they're the ones that wrote the stuff in, if that's okay. Um, but it, there's not a lot to say. It's really, it's really, really basic, and it's just kind of explaining what we've been doing all along. Janine and Matt? Put you on the spot, sorry.
Uh, sure. I mean, really, the, we made some very small changes to the language in one of the paragraphs that just tried to emphasize that we are taking a restorative approach to all disciplinary action. And, uh, Matt, I'll turn it over to you. We, we've kind of made some language changes to the, the chart that we have that is really more of an example than anything, um, super specific.
So, Janine and Matt, for, for folks who may not be familiar with the term, um, uh, restorative um, discipline, or could you guys explain that, and how it's different than non-restorative?
Sure. So, I mean, we were kind of really just looking at some alternative ways to apply discipline for our student body. So, traditionally, um, you know, tools such as detentions and moving away from using detentions and looking more at providing students with specific perspective. So, restorative workshop, or conference, or circle, all have kind of different nuances to them. But, all of those different techniques focus on showing, you know, specific behaviors and what damages they have, but still utilizing all stakeholders in the process. So, for example, a restorative conference or a restorative circle would have a student perspective, a faculty perspective, you know, it could be anything from a, a family member, a guidance counselor. So, it's showing students how specific actions impact others is kind of the best way that I could put it.
Thank you.
Can I just add to, to that? That's, it, Matt said it well, and, and I think the, the perspective is also, it's giving voice to the victims in, in whatever happened, right? Because often, like, traditional school discipline is, alright, the student did, you know, X, Y, or Z, broke X, Y, or Z rule, and gets this sort of punishment, and where's the victim in all of that? Um, and so, the restorative approach brings, uh, restoration to the victim, hopefully.
And repair the relationships, right, so that you, they can move forward and, and build community. Um, and that we're really trying to engage students in, um, in, in the consequences that they face, right? What it's, what's necessary to make things right versus just doling out a punishment that seems disconnected uh, to relationships and community.
Thank you. Um, any questions for, um, any of the high school admin? Uh, Leah?
Thanks, guys. Um, can you just point me to the page? I, this is in the student handbook, right?
The document that we gave you are, are changes to the student handbook.
And so, I'm having trouble finding it. I'm so sorry. Can you point me to the page?
I think it's fifty-one.
Page fifty is the general introduction, and page fifty-one is the behavioral code.
Thank you so much.
Do you have the document that we shared with Alita, Leah?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I do.
It's got those pages right on there.
Got it. Thanks, guys.
Kathy, I think Mary has something.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary, go ahead.
So, uh, one, this is an observation of-
So, uh, one, this is an observation of, as I was reading through, and as a former, uh, high school principal, I'm always interested in, in reading student handbooks. Not everybody is. Um, and I noticed on page 44 that it said, "School Council", the Student Council will have, um, the opportunity twice a year to meet with school committee. And I, I really liked the sound of that, and I thought that I would just bring that up to school committee that somehow, as we go forward, we might, um, extend an invitation or that, that the, the Student Council might do that. First of all, we will have a student representative. Um, however, this seemed to be Student Council. And, um, and with everything that we've, you know, done, it just doesn't seem as if we've, we've, we've done that. And I would really like to see that going forward, that we would do that. I was really pleased to see that. So that, that was my only comment. Everything else, um, I, you know, I continue to learn, and it looks good.
Thank you, Mary.
I think, I think in the past that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I, I think in the past the Student Council would come forward and, and, and just kind of give a general overview of what they've been up to and what they've been working on. That was the type of thing it was. That's, that's sort of gone away in the last couple of years. But I'm sure they'd be more than happy to come back and do, do something like that.
Thank you. Amy, did you have a question?
I was just thinking that maybe you could just put it on the planning calendar. Like, for the school committee, you know, invite schools, hi- high school Student Council and put it on there, and then maybe it'll actually happen, but.
Good idea. Yeah, right.
Can I just mention too, that Steve's absolutely right. The Student Council has come before this committee. Certainly in my time, they've come before this committee, um, and presented. So Mary, i- i- it has happened.
But to make it a part of our routine, the way other things.
But I agree. I think putting it on the planning calendar is a really good idea.
That's a really good idea. Yep. Okay. Other questions? Oh, Elaine, and then Joseph.
Um, so just to go back to the restorative practices, um, I fully support the updates. I imagine that the adults, the adults involved in these conversations, and I don't know if that's just you as an administrative team or if it's others, would need either training or practice, um, to have these types of conversations. Because I imagine for some people, this would be a, a totally new way of thinking and doing things. So you talk a little bit about, like, what's available for the adults and who, who they would be and how they're going to go about this.
Last, last year, we had a PLT that had probably 15 or 20 teachers, um, working on a, on a restorative justice, uh, restorative discipline, justice type of, uh, um, group. And, and they were working, I can't think of the name of the book. I was in the group with them. And, and it, it, there was a book that, that had some outlines and some guidance on how to, how to go about doing these type things. Um, and it's, it's, uh, I, I think, I think the school itself, a, a lot of the teachers are very, very interested in trying to get this done because they, they get to give their kind of side of the story if something's going on. If a kid's being disruptive in the classroom and has to leave, they never get to, they never get to, you know, talk to that student about the whole situation. It, it, normally the student would get a, would get a detention or something here. With the circles, they're able to, to have a chance to, um, discuss the situation, why it impacted them. And student understands what he's doing that's impacting the, the rest of the class, so. It, there, there is, we do, we have had some, some discussions on that amongst the faculty as well.
Thank you. I'll send Elaine. Uh, Joseph?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I just wanted to make a comment. Uh, I was going to save this comment till the superintendent's report, but since the high school administrator staff is here, I did want to make a very quick comment. It's not part of the handbook or anything, but I did want to thank the, the administration at the high school. It did not go unnoticed that the blue light was on in the entryway to the school, uh, last week. So I want to thank the administration for doing that. And, uh, if, uh, if anybody knows why they're, they're putting the blue light on, it's, uh, for autism. So I want to thank the high school administration staff for that. Um, getting back to the handbook and looking at the, um, levels of, uh, in- increasing discipline and what have you, I just had a question, and I don't, there's even an answer to this, but I'm looking at, I guess it'd be the fourth level, the highly disruptive to others and/or highly unsafe. And, uh, it looks like one of the criteria for that is under the influence, and that's all it really says. And I'm wondering, is that something that i- in, in 2021 is something that would, uh, result in a, in a, in a fourth level type of disciplinary action?
We've, we've got guidelines based on, if a stu-, if a student is under the influence of something, we've got specific guidelines that we, that we follow. I, I don't know that, I don't know that there's anything more than following our own guidelines for, for that type of thing. It's in, it's in the handbook, you know, and it's discussed in the handbook, so.
Madam Chairman, I have, may I follow up?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I only ask because, you know, in, in 2021, e- even in our court system, they're, they're looking to take a more conciliatory approach with those who are, you know, addicted to narcotics, alcohol, and what have you. And I, I'm just wondering if, if the idea is to, to be some less draconian, a little bit more, uh, inclusive in regards to our discipline. I, I've just thrown it out there for consideration, Mr. Colanane. Maybe under the influence might be something you might want to move back down the, the disciplinary scale.
I, I mean, I think under the influence is, is an issue because it's, it's either alcohol or drugs, which aren't allowed in the building in the first place. We, we've actually put the, we, we put together a program that we haven't run very well this year because of the pandemic. Um, but, uh, uh, the whole vaping secession program, uh, for students that are caught. We've got a lot of students using the, the nicotine vapes and the marijuana vapes. And, and we've, we've set it up with, um, the nurse, the nurse department meets with them, uh, the athletic department, the, the assistant principals meet with them, and they, they do a project. So we actually, we are working towards trying to make some of those things better. Because we're, we're finding, just, just suspending a kid for, for smoking in, in the bathroom wasn't getting us anywhere. So we're, we're hopeful that this, this secession program would ma- make things work a little bit better.
Thank you. Amy?
Yes, um, I have a question related to the homework policy and religious holiday observance, being an excused, uh, excused absence. And maybe you could answer or point me to any language in the handbook that talks about what happens if a student is absent in observance of a religious holiday, what the, um, procedure is for missed homework or tests.
They're, they're not responsible for missed homework or tests if they're for religious purposes.
Is there anything, though, that directs, um, I, I thought, Leah, maybe you can correct me on this, or I thought that there's a policies that says that we should, teachers should avoid planning events or, um, homework, tests, um, field trips, elections, that kind of thing, um, on religious holidays. But when I read through the handbook, like, there's nothing that talks about that, and it's happened to my kids. That's why I'm asking. Um, if that's something that maybe we should think about putting in the handbook?
Kathy, I think Anne Marie's got her hand up as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Anne Marie. I was looking because I remember there is a, a school policy, and we were also looking at, um, uh, policies and protocols from other districts last year, but we never got to the point of making recommendations. But Anne Marie, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Thank you. We put that at the bottom, bottom of the school year calendar. And we put the list of the, um, ma- major religious holidays that are observed by our students with a note, um, that, that, um, asking the, um, the teachers and the administrators to be mindful of those dates when they're scheduling tests and important reviews and field trips and everything. And then also too, in our administrative meetings and our principals' meetings each year, we reiterate that with the principals, uh, to go back when they're making their plans to make sure that people who are out because they're celebrating religious holidays aren't missing something big, a concert or a big test or a field trip.
Okay, um, I just wonder if there's an appropriate place in this handbook to kind of close the loop with all of that and make them all jive. Um, yeah.
Kathy, do you mind if I jump in?
No, go right ahead, Leah. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm writing and I'm not looking. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, so what I remember is that we did attend to this on the calendar and that this was also going to be something that Anne Marie, we work into the administrator handbook. And we're going to put it into the administrat-, the building level administrator's hands to make this announcement at their opening meetings each year to make sure that this is one of the practices that's adopted at the school level. So that's where it would live. Whereas the student handbook's really about student behavior, the administrator handbook would be about directing the adults.
Okay, I've got that down in the notes. And so, so it's covered in policy. It's on the, the school counter, and there should be something for administrators, uh, to read as an expectation for staff at the beginning of, of the school year. And as things come up, I recall that we would put out reminders about, you know, no homework or, you know, excused absences when they were religious holidays, so.
It's actually in the handbook under excused absences, Kathy.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I knew I saw it there, but I just, I didn't attend in history.
Yeah, it says religious holiday observance, um, but I was looking at the homework policy and didn't, I, I just was want, I just wanted to bring that up and see, make sure it's covered somewhere, and it sounds like it is. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, I am going to, uh, ask Elaine to read the motion.
Uh, I moved to approve the 2021, 2022 NRHS student handbook as presented.
I have a second?
Second.
Steve seconded. Um, any other questions or comments before we vote? Seeing none? Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Me, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
I'm staying.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you. And, and thank you, um, for coming tonight to help us understand the handbook. And, um, again, I can't believe, I don't know who, who I was, uh, maybe I was talking to Alita about all the stuff that's happened this year, and in hindsight, it looks like it went by quickly, but I know in reality it did not. And, but again, thank you for your leadership, your hard work. And how's it going with the kids all back?
It's going pretty well. We, we, we just have the hybrid kids at this point. Our kids won't be coming back till the 26th.
Oh, all right. Well, okay. That's, I'm sorry.
It's going pretty well. I mean, it's, it's nice to have kids back in the building. It's, it's, uh, more like a school again, so that's a good thing.
Okay. Well, thanks so much for all your hard work and enjoy the rest of the evening. We don't need them for anything else, do we, Brooke? So you're welcome to stay, but we understand if you choose to leave. Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the superintendent, um, salary range. And this was discussed at PSC on, um, Monday. Mary, do you want to speak to that?
Okay, so why don't you, so our, um, how about I make the motion for us or not? Should I make the motion and we talk about it?
Well, I wanted to, if you just give what we, what our recommendation is, and then I think Anne Marie had some information she wanted to share as well, and then we could go with the motion.
Okay. So, um, the recommendation of the personnel subcommittee is a, a salary range for the new superintendent of 180,000 to 210,000 dollars. And, um, Anne Marie, as Kathy said, she'll probably call on her to talk a little bit more about this.
So how we got here, Anne Marie, and other information we need to know?
Thank you. I was asked to, um, research superintendent salaries with the task of coming up with, you know, some guidance around this issue. I looked at the superintendent salaries in several categories of districts. First, I looked at the other districts within the Assabette Valley Collaborative, um, with the, with whom we align, and we consider ourselves.
Anne Marie, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to point out to folks that the, um, the information that you're referencing was provided as part of the meeting materials, competitive salary data. So I'm sorry. Go ahead, Anne Marie.
The Assabette Valley, uh, the group of Assabette Valley districts was one of the groups that we compared our salary to. Then the other groups we compared ourselves to were districts that have got, um, similar numbers of students, districts with between 2,500 and 4,000 students. And there's a list in the materials of those districts from, um, from whom we were able to get the information. And you can see where Nishoba sits in there and see that we're in the ballpark there. Next group is the list of districts with more students than Nishoba, 4,000 or more students. And lastly, the districts with fewer students than Nishoba, then do the tiny ones, but anyone from 1,500 students to 2,500 students. And then when we, you know, look at those, you can see where, you know, where the, where the ranges are with the different sized districts. I also look to see, to the extent the information is available, if there were other significant provisions that might impact the salary that add to the total compensation. That's hard to quantify because that's not in the superintendent's, uh, superintendent's contracts. And it's certainly not universal that there are those things in the contracts. Some of the, some of, some contracts have got annuities, some kinds have got, um, money for travel mileage, uh, mileage reimbursement and those sorts of things. They're not universal, and they're not as common as they might have been in years past because the trend now is to put the money in salary where it's pensionable rather than in something that's reimbursable. In other words, salary is pensionable, mileage reimbursement is not. Lastly, I had a conversation with, uh, Dorothy Presser from MASC. She's probably got her fingers on the pulse of this issue more than, more than most people and, um, best able to tell us if what we were kind of thinking was right. She said that 210 that we have now is, um, is a little bit on the higher side, but not outrageous. She said that in order to attract a very strong candidate to our position, she suggests that we not put the range below 210. And she said that because, uh, superintendents are very familiar with what the current salary is, just, you know, statewide, um, our salary may draw more attractive candidates if we didn't reduce it. And she agreed that the range of 180 to 210 that we ran by her, um, was very appropriate.
Thank you. So, um, Mary, why don't you make the motion? We'll second it, and then we'll entertain questions and comments.
Okay. I move that the school committee approved the personnel subcommittee recommendation of a salary range of 180,000 to 210,000 for the new Nishoba Regional School District Superintendent of Schools.
Second?
Second.
Steve seconded. Okay, questions, comments? Um, Leah, and then Mike?
I just wondered, um, if, I don't know if Anne Marie had a reason for eliminating the regional schools that are a little bit to the east of us, and.
Eliminate anybody, Leah. I, um, was able to find what I was able to find. You know, these, there's no central warehouse for this information. So, um, we did this accommodation of, um, surveys that were sent out by MASBO, as School Business Administrators Association, some things that we got from the listservs of my state organization, the personnel administrators, um, and also, um, from the, uh, assistant superintendents listserv. So we got what we got. We didn't, uh, we didn't, um, you know, purposely eliminate anybody.
Got it. I was just going to, um, add into the, um, evidence here that, and I, you know, I, I'm not necessarily comparing us, but there is a lot of comparison done to Acton, Boxborough and other regional schools that are just around us. And AB's, um, salary for their superintendent, I'm looking at the contract, is 228. So I think that that reference point is important. It's just one more piece of evidence.
Thank you.
Miss, Miss Codiya? I was just curious. Uh, do you have it at your fingertips? Am I recognized? I'm sorry, Kathy.
Yes, go right ahead, Rich.
I didn't wait to start talking. Leah, how many students?
Who was talking? Go ahead. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Rich. Mike was second. Now, then you can be third.
I'll yield my time. Go ahead.
Okay.
Super quick. How many students are in Acton, Boxborough? Do you know, Leah?
So I don't know, but I do know that AB is regional K to 12, which is, um, another similarity that's rare.
That's information. I mean, you can, um, uh, Google that information. It's public information if you want to, if you're interested in any school systems salary or contract for superintendents. Mike, are you all set, Rich? Okay, Mike?
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Anne Marie, for presenting this. Um, apologies if I'm mistaken, but it, the range that. is being recommended does not seem like a significant departure from our current salary. So I'm wondering, I guess, I guess I'm wondering if that's true. If so, what, what decisions were, that went into basically edifying the current range since it seems pretty in line with the recommendation, or vice versa, rather.
Well, the recommendation is in line with what the, what's currently being paid. How we came to that is what I just described. We looked at other districts, we talked to Dorothy Presser. Is that what you're asking? Am I missing the vote here?
Yeah, I think what I'm asking is, just to be clear, you're not really recommending a significant departure from where we are right now.
That's right.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I was getting at. Sorry if I was a little.
That's okay.
Yeah, if I could add, Mike, Brooke's salary is, is 210, 673.
Right.
So that's our ceiling. We just had to decide what the ground floor was going to be.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other que, oh, Anne-Marie?
Acton, Boxborough, thank you, Pat. Their enrollment is 1750, 1,750.
K-12?
I believe so.
Wow, I thought they were bigger than that. Anyway. Okay, other questions or comments? Amy?
Yeah, do we get a sense from Dorothy Presser about what other districts are advertising for salary? Now, because there's a lot of superintendent positions that are posted, or what people who have recently been hired? Like, I think Westford, didn't Westford just make a decision to hire a new superintendent? Like, do we get a sense for how that compared to these numbers?
Dorothy advised us with regard to this range, saying that it was a competitive, given our district and comparable districts. So that's what we have to go from. And, and to Anne-Marie's point, and there's actually on the MASC website, some resources to look at administrative positions and not just salaries, but benefits. And, and they don't have all the information. I think it's whatever people want to contribute. But, like Anne-Marie mentioned, there are car allowances, travel allowances, annuities. Some superintendents get 100% of their health insurance paid for. They get life insurance, dental insurance. This, I mean, one thing that stood out, and this is a complete aside, is that the superintendent of Nantucket gets an $18,000 a year housing allowance, which is pretty cool. However, you, when you think about the whole Nantucket thing, it kind of makes sense. So that's all over the place, but I think the point we wanted to make is that we have the salaries, but there are other things that may elevate the, the compensation package as a, as a total. Anne-Marie?
Nice to have smart friends who are here to help bail me out. The total enrollment at AB is 5,200. The high school is the 1750.
That's more like it.
And I can tell you that they have the same problem attracting postmasters on, on, on Nantucket. They have to give a little kicker to them too, because they, you have to live, right? You need a place.
Let me see, Mary, and then Amy.
So I just want to get back to Amy's question about Dorothy Presser's. Dorothy did, she was with us, she did look at this, and, and especially since MASC, that's the agency we're working with, and Dorothy is our consultant. I'm sure that she, she very much wants us to have a competitive salary range to be able to attract the best possible candidate. And what she did say was that, that Brooke's salary is on the high end right now, and you can, you can look at that as you, as you look at the work that Anne-Marie did. So she didn't feel that we had to go higher than, than that range, but as Kathy's talking about, the other benefits that could be negotiable, that, that might be the area where it would cost us some more money, and yet, as Anne-Marie also said, superintendents are looking for salary rather than the benefits because of the pension aspect to it. So this was her, her best judgment, and I think, too, the fact that she's not just our field representative, but our consultant in the search made us feel comfortable with this range.
Amy, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just happened to find the superintendent contract for Westford that they just, the superintendent they just hired, and the salary is 210, 620.
Wow, so close.
Yeah, so we're definitely in the ballpark.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any hands, so if there are no objections, I will call the vote. I'll start with Mary.
Yes.
Mike? Oh, Mike, give me this. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Me, yes. Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay, and so that is our salary range. And Mary, if you could communicate that to Dorothy Presser? That would be great. Oh, Alita, yes? I think Steve seconded it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Kathy.
And I, I'll let Dorothy.
Mary, you're muted.
I, I will let Dorothy know.
Okay, the next item under new business is also from the Personnel Subcommittee. Mary, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I, I will. So the the consensus of the Personnel Subcommittee, as you know, is comprised of Kathy and me, that in regard to bringing a recommendation for a range for non-salried personnel, it was a much more complex topic in, in a sense than for the super, the recommendation for the superintendent salary. And so our recommendation is that, that we would schedule a school committee workshop to allow for appropriate professional development for the whole school committee to be able to assist in the decision-making in regard to a range for the non-salary, that would be the administrators other than the superintendent. And that, that's, that's our recommendation.
Pulled together a lot of information for us, and when we looked at it, given all the different positions, it's, it's clearly not something that could be accomplished during a regular meeting. Excuse me, but Anne-Marie has pulled together information which includes methods used in calculating salary ranges, a lot of comparable data, and also put together a proposal for salary ranges for all non-union salaried personnel. And, again, to, to reiterate what Mary said, it's just not doable during a meeting. So there needs to be the time, and, and I would suggest that this might be a good workshop to have with the new superintendent as we are putting these, these things together. So I don't know that we have to vote on it as opposed to if we were bringing something monetary, like the salary ranges ahead, but that would be the, the recommendation, as Mary said, to schedule the workshop to get this work done. And bring in perhaps Dorothy Presser. Anne-Marie is a great resource, and go from there. Any questions or comments? Yes, Mary?
So I do have a question. If, if we, if we do have a motion, and the, and the committee would be willing to, to vote on this, then, then it's documented that, that for this year, we, we at least tried to be in conformance with doing this before July 1st. I don't know that that really would be possible. But there's a lot more to this, even that the whole committee needs to understand. And that's why Kathy's saying that it couldn't just be in one meeting. The professional development, and then the understanding that knowledge base needs to be built. But that would be why I think that my recommendation would be that we have a motion.
Would you care to make a motion?
I, I would, since I, I wrote one. But, and if, if, if people decide that you don't think it's necessary, then that's fine, too. And here's the motion. I move that the School Committee approve the Personnel Subcommittee recommendation that a proposal for the salary ranges for non-salried personnel be scheduled at a school committee workshop to allow for appropriate professional development to deci, to assist in decision-making. Poor Alita, did you get, did you get that?
Who's that, Amy?
Leah.
Leah, thank you. Leah seconded. What I'd like to add is that this responsibility is pursuant to policy GCBA. And I think I spoke to that before, and that's where the July 1st date is, is mentioned. However, this, there, there are, I would say, a number of policies that we have supposed to be, be doing. I think we've gotten better over the years. But we, this, the School Committee, as long as I have been on it, and I have no evidence of anything prior to this, has never established salary ranges for non-union, so we don't have anything really that, that is a precedent for that. So that is why I, I think it makes sense to have a workshop and to, to get this done, and then, then you actually have something to review every year before July 1st. Other questions or comments? So the motion is to schedule a, a workshop to learn about the non-union salary ranges and how to determine them. It would be scheduled separate from a regular school committee at a, a date to be, are you, Mary, are you thinking hopefully before July 1st?
Well, if we did before July 1st, then, then the new superintendent wouldn't be part of it, but that probably could be. So that's why I wasn't putting a date on this. I think.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking we haven't done it in all these years. I don't think it's going to kill us to be late this year.
That, that's what I'm thinking, but it, it might be possible to do it before July 1st. But that's, that was one of the reasons I didn't put a date on this.
Okay, but the goal would be to do it with the new superintendent?
If possible, yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the vote is to have a workshop to determine non-union salary schedules. And I vote yes. Amy?
Yeah.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, so that should probably go on a planning calendar, probably the parking lot for when, you know, we, we move forward. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is School Committee Chair Update. At the last meeting, I wasn't clear about the responsibilities of the advisory with regard to, I knew there was some open meeting law and all that other stuff, but anyway, as always, I contacted Dorothy Presser, and this is the information that she provided to me. As an advisory to the School Committee, the Screening Committee is a public body and subject to open meeting law. Meetings must be posted, and minutes for the executive sessions must be kept, and Dorothy Presser will be responsible for taking the minutes during those executive sessions. The April 26 orientation will not be an executive session and will be recorded the same way we record the School Committee meeting. The remainder of the Screening Committee meetings will start in open session, and then there will be a roll call vote to enter into executive session. And Mary McCarthy will chair the meetings. So I hope that clears things up, and I'm sorry if I contributed to the confusion last time. And so Mary will work with Dorothy and Alita to set them up in the, will work with Alita to set them up the way our other Subcommittee and Advisory meetings are on our, our web page, our part of the webpage. Any, any questions about that? Mary?
I just want to give credit because I think that it was Alita who said that we would have to keep the minutes, and she was right, that's all.
She's always right.
That's why, I just wanted, I just wanted to.
Thankfully. Thankfully. Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll move on to the charge to the Screening Committee, and again, this is from the Personnel Subcommittee, Mary?
So you want me to make this motion? Oh, just to talk, what?
If I could just tee it up, for the, for the Screening Committee to do their work, they need an official charge from the School Committee. So Mary will make that motion.
Okay, so I move that the Screening Committee for the 2021 Superintendent Search will bring forth three to five candidates who are qualified with a D.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. To serve as Superintendent of NRST, current employees of the district who apply will be given an interview.
Second?
Second.
Steve seconded. Questions or comments? Mike?
It's really just a repetition. Mary, could you just repeat that again, because eventually at some point I'm going to update the website. I just want to make sure the language is correct.
Okay. The Screening Committee for the 2021 Superintendent Search will bring forward three to five candidates who are qualified to serve as Superintendent of NRST, or Neshoba Regional School District. Current employees of the districts, district who apply will be given an interview.
Mike, I can send you that text if you want. Is that okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none? We had a motion, Mary made the motion, and who seconded? Was it Leah? Or Steve? Steve seconded. Okay. All right, I will call the vote. Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, and now we are on to the Superintendent's Report.
She's, she's on her way back.
Okay. This is where Amy could be playing the piano, giving us a musical interlude, and Mike could be singing.
We're telling jokes. I've already told that zero and eight joke a few times.
Actually, I prefer the singing. I'm more than happy to comply.
Mike, it's a gift. You have a gift. What can I say?
Such a gift.
Brett is apparently an amazing rapper, so we can look that into.
Everyone has their own talents.
How far did Brooke go? Did she think we were going to take a long time?
Next time I'll be prepared. I'll bring my laptop over by the piano, and I'll just play.
You should. I'm intrigued. I'm intrigued. Mike just spontaneously broke out into song last week. It was, it was wonderful.
We can do what we do in my family. We do spontaneous. So somebody says a word, and then whoever can come up with the song with that word in it, fast. So somebody says a word, and then whoever can come up with the song with that word in it fast. You know, they get to go next.
I'm older than all of you. I have a better repertoire in my, my song lyric memory.
Well, we could have, we could do the, the Nishoba School District's version of "The Voice." There she is. Okay. You're on Brooke's superintendent report.
You bet. Thanks. So even though there are only three items on here, these three items have been all for the last two weeks. And, and busy, but very productive. So MSBA, we should know by, I'm hoping Friday or Monday, if we are going to be indeed on the agenda for the April meeting, we still don't know. I still don't have a definitive answer right now, but they're hoping that by Friday or Monday I do. What we do know is if we're not on for April, we should be on the June meeting, but of course, we're hoping to be on the April meeting. I feel really good about all of the work that's, that's been submitted. It's been on time and early, and I feel really good about the position that we're in. So as soon as I know anything on that, I'll let you, I'll send out a quick email so that you all know, and I'll let our community know as well if we end up being on that April 14th date. And of course, if we are on the April 14th date, then I'll let everybody know the outcome of that vote on the 14th as well. The full return, you can imagine the amount of work that goes into that. And even now, I mean, we, we had a number of meetings today. Day three into, you know, the elementary, middle school coming back, what are things that we're going to look at? What are things we can do differently? What are issues that have come up since that we weren't anticipating before? So there's a lot of that kind of thing happening right now. But I would say that each of our schools is, is reporting a smooth re-entry. Everybody feels really good about, of course, seeing the kids back in the building. So for the most part, it's gone very, very smoothly. So special thanks to our parents, to our staff, to our admin, to everybody who's worked so hard to make sure that this has gone off so smoothly. So that's, that continues to go well. Of course, we're excited now about the April 26th date for our high school kids to come back. So that's kind of next on our list. The budget update, the, the budget has gone, the budget process continues to unfold for us. And I know that I've said to you before, you know, you, you vote that budget before March 13th, but a whole lot happens between March 13th and about April 13th. So for example, we know now, and I know Pat's on here, Pat, if I'm saying anything or missing anything, I know that you're going to jump in. You know, we, we know right now that we have $63,000 more for lane changes than we had anticipated. You know, things like that that happened on the matrix. We had some folks that we had projected who told us that they were going to retire, and then on the very last day changed their mind and said that they weren't going to retire. The flip side of that is we've had a couple of folks move, planning on moving out of state. And so those were resignations we weren't expecting. So, you know, all those things all kind of come into play. And then we've had some savings in special education that we didn't anticipate. And so that's going to play a component in all of this. I think that we feel strong in terms of wrapping this up by probably Monday or Tuesday of next week. I think that we had another really productive meeting today. I did the 117 road trip. I talked to all of the principals that were going to be directly involved today to make sure that we're all on the same page, and we are. So I think that we should be able to safely wrap this up early next week. So that's, that's feeling very good and very solid. And, you know, again, we've, we know that the S R two money is coming through. We know the S R three money is coming through. We also know that our towns, our municipalities are getting some, some decent money as well. Our three communities, and that's posted right now if you want to go online and find it. So I think that in, through all of this incredibly tumultuous time with COVID and the expenditures that we had to make, that, that's all really starting to be backfilled nicely for both the municipalities and the school district. So I think that helps us as well, so that we know that as a school district, we're not going to have this gaping hole at the end of the school year because of COVID, because we can see those funds coming into play now. So I think that we feel that we're in a strong position now to, to finish out the, the budget process. Pat, is there anything there that I missed? Any of the key salient points?
No, I think you pretty much, you know, touched on all of them. We're looking forward to see what our actual S of three number is going to be, the concrete number. And the, they put out preliminary numbers to the towns, too. But they're not expecting much change in those. But I'm very hopeful, more so than I was a month ago, or two months ago, or even six months ago. So I think we, we should be doing well going into the next year.
I think we're going to end up stronger than we certainly thought we were going to at December, you know. So as we watch all of this start to unfold. So, so I think, you know, as Pat and I talked through today, some of the additional resignations that we've received, if people are moving just generally out of state, you know, have left some different opportunities for us that we hadn't seen coming. And so we're going to capitalize on that as well. So the cuts that we see coming potentially now probably will not be a total of 11 because we've, because we can see that we could backfill some of this to use as offsets in this year. So we've, and a lot of those positions that we will be looking at reducing, most of them are already going to be reduced as a result of natural attrition for the most part. That's what it's looking like right now. I know we met almost all day today, and so I think that we're, we're really close to finishing this up and wrapping it up.
Brooke, you were going to give us an update on the pool testing.
Well, the pool testing, I'm going to, the only thing I can say, Todd really took the lead on this, and he's not able to be with us tonight. So he, he will report out. We sent a survey out. I know that most of you know that because if you're a parent, you receive the survey. Most of our surveys, when we send them out, we get a really good, solid response back from our surveys. We generally get, you know, anywhere from 1,500, 1,800, 2,000. That would be a norm for us for the types of surveys that we get back. This did not, that did not happen with this. And, you know, it was pretty split on who would, who would support it and who wouldn't support it. Now, Todd has the final findings on that, but I would want you to know that we didn't get, we didn't get what we would regularly get for survey results back on this particular survey. So he'll report that out in greater detail next meeting.
Um, questions for Brooke about the superintendent's report? Leah?
Thanks, Brooke. I have a quick question for you about the full return update. And I think that it goes to the numbers that you shared with us the last time we were together about the enrollment and where, how things were going to fluctuate between the two models. So I wonder if you could, because I've had a few parents reach out to me about class size and how classrooms are holding up to 25 children. And even in like a non-COVID year, 25 is high for a class size of little kids. So can you just talk a little bit about class size and what you think is responsible? Or if there is a need to perhaps bring more staff onboard in a year where there's not very much money?
Well, not very much money, not a lot of staff, additional staff out there to hire either, Leah, as you well know. I didn't really, the superintendent role didn't, didn't really come into that particular component, quite frankly. That was really site-based. You know, they, they would talk, they being the principals, would talk to me if they felt that they were uncomfortable with the number or they needed to make a change or something like that. We would have those kinds of conversations, but overarching, nobody came forward and said, I've got a class too large, or I feel really uncomfortable. Nobody did that. So had they, we, we would have looked at it a little bit differently. And normally, quite frankly, with this group of principals, they're very good about doing that. I mean, we have those kinds of discussions all summer long, for example. That just didn't happen during this time period at all. So I think that if people had felt incredibly uncomfortable, they absolutely would have come forward, and we would have dealt with something. If, if, if parents have some concerns, they do need to reach out to their principals for sure.
Other questions for Brooke? Rich?
I just want to make sure I heard that right. So you're not expecting, Brooke, any, any cuts? I mean, that's kind of remarkable. We were.
No, 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 no.
I misheard you. I'm sorry.
Let me, let me just go back and rephrase that. I think before, where we were looking at programmatic, like larger programmatic cuts and that kind of thing, I think we're in a position where we're trying to work this more as a result of additional resignations through a natural attrition process more than the slashing of programs. That doesn't mean that cuts are not going to happen, because they are. It's just through a different, a different way of doing it. And I don't think that it will be the 11 that we had first projected. And you'll recall that I said that, and that's always the problem with putting that kind of stuff out there ahead of time is because so much could change. Now, it could have gone the other way, quite frankly, too. And we didn't know that when we put that out there in March. Because we've had a lot happen in the last couple of weeks, the last four weeks. But we, we do feel really positive. I think that Pat just articulated it really clearly when she said we feel so much better now than we felt five months ago or six months ago. And a large part of that is because the COVID money is flowing through now, and we're able to offset against the expenditures that we had to put out this year. So we're not going to have this huge bubble at the end of our school year as a whole. So that, that leaves us in a much more solid position physically.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Other questions for Brooke? Amy?
Yeah, this is a question, probably due to the fact that this is my first time going through this whole budget cycle. You know, as I see it play out, I'm just wondering what drives the March vote for the school committee?
Your charter. Your charter does. Because, you know what, Amy? That's such a great question. That is such a great question, because the truth is, if, if we could just hang on about another month or two, there wouldn't be a lot of, a lot of, you know, wiggle room. It would just be a lot more solid. Like, we know now, as we move into next week, we know we're solid as opposed to in March where you're not as solid. So you're right, but it's your charter. You have to make the decision according to your charter before March 13th.
And who is in charge of the charter? Like, I mean, I know the school committee, but is that a policy thing? I mean, how does that? Yes.
It's not policy. No, it's not. Maybe Joseph might be somebody who could explain the charter as much as anybody could.
I, I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman, if you.
True, but it's called the regional agreement.
Yeah, it's part of the regional agreement, and it's, and it's controlled by the voters of the district. So basically, what it is, is a sacra sac. Until, until the voters of the district change it, that's the date that we're, we're obligated to meet. It's as simple as that.
That probably has something to do with having the information available to the three towns for their town meeting.
I, I think that's exactly a big part of it, because they need that placeholder in their own warrants. Or, yeah, in their own warrants. So that's, that's probably a big reason for it. And it has to go to print. And there's so much. They need that lead time as well. So I mean, I do understand it, but Amy, it, it is frustrating for us, too, because it leaves us in this kind of weird space for about a two-month period.
Um, who had the hand up? Leah, you had your hand up.
Well, I, I might defer to Mary, but the Policy Subcommittee is currently looking at editing the regional agreement, and it seems to me that this might be something we should question. Maybe not change it, but just question it.
Mary?
So, so that is interesting, but my experience in other districts is that this is the norm. And, and for the towns to be able to, we're also looking at what the towns are doing in terms of budgeting and the warrants. And so this is, this is the way it is. And one thing that's really important to understand is that, as Brooke has explained, changes, especially in, in personnel, people, you know, waiting till the last minute, saying they were retiring, and then there's a, there's a date, and then they change their mind right, right at the last minute. That's, that's, that's quite a, quite a, you know, it's a substantial amount of money. Also, personnel that are leaving. This is happening in all districts across the Commonwealth. And it's one of the reasons that school budgets can't just be exactly set because of the variable that we're dealing with people and a lot of people and in an environment where, as opposed to business, where people might stay longer, I'm not sure. But it's, it's, it's a unique culture. And this, in my experience in education, is always the way it is. And with, with as much planning as possible, looking at things, and with a little bit of luck, the eventual outcome can be, as Brooke has said, and as, as, you know, Brooke and, and Pat and the administration team have been able to do, less dire by the time the budget comes to fruition than it is in March. But I don't, and Leah's right, we could, we, we certainly were talking about the regional agreement. But this, this is more a norm that is the way, you know, you have to plan. At some point, the towns have to plan. They have to have something. So it's never going to be a budget set in stone. It's what it is, even though we have to have the hearing on it. We talk all about it. But it's inevitable that it's going to change.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brooke. Um, so we are now at the subcommittee reports. Budget and warrant, anything to report?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. Mary, personnel?
Yes, so as Kathy had said, Personnel Subcommittee met on Monday for five. In attendance, Kathy and Anne Marie and Brooke and I. Proved minutes. You know that we made the recommendation in terms of the superintendent salary range and about the workshop to be able to have more professional development before making any kind of a proposal or decision on the, the non-salaried administrators. We have, the next meeting is April 14th. We'll be looking at the handbook and additions to our school committee handbook, to be specific, with a lot of different handbooks. And, and, you know, inserting some more information, such as language for public hearings, some of the documents and general advice on the process of a superintendent search. And, and I just would certainly say that if anybody has any other ideas, if you have a chance, just to take a look at the, the school committee handbook and the policies and have ideas, it would be great if you could get them to me and Kathy by our April 14th meeting at 4 o'clock. That would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Policy?
Hi. So policy had on the agenda today, we had a nice update from Elaine and the Dear J advisory and some of the activities that they are currently engaged in. I'm not sure, Elaine, if you're looking to perhaps share out just yet.
She, she has a committee report, but do go on. I said she has, she's, she's got a report.
Oh, very good. Okay, so we'll wait. And, and then we, we had a special guest. Dr. McCarthy joined us to kind of hand off to the Policy Subcommittee or at least start the process of transitioning that, that renovation into a more structured environment that has a little more muscle, like a subcommittee. And so we are going to be looking into whether or not the Policy Subcommittee can handle the revise, the revising of our regional agreement, or if we need to enlist a consultant of some kind because it is obviously an incredibly important document. We don't want to make any mistakes or do it in any improper way. So Mary is going to report back to us at our next policy meeting on the direction that we should take. Desi has already enlisted a couple of their people to help with kind of commenting on the current agreement, but we don't know where to go from here. That said, the agreement is totally legitimate at this moment in time, and there's no concern there. This all began, remember, when Mary discovered that we needed to bring additional members onto the committee, which resulted in three additional people, one from each town. That is basically it. If you guys have anything that you want policy to look at or look for in the future, please let me know. There's one thing hanging out there, and it's around the harassment policy. And Kathy and I are kind of talking about that offline.
Thank you, Leah.
Yeah.
Mike, communication?
Yeah, so Communications Subcommittee had yet another outstanding meeting last night. So a lot has happened since the last time we met. Initially, we thought with the administrative turnover that there may be a really valuable opportunity to bring Chris Hurren on board. A really valuable opportunity to bring Chris Hurren on board. As a consultant to, in order to transition from one administration to the next. After a conversation, a really good conversation with him. The Subcommittee has decided not to come forward to. With it, with a recommendation to bring Chris on board. And the thought there was that. It, it may be better for the incoming superintendent to establish themselves with an entry plan. Rather than kind of starting off saying, well, here you go. Here's this. Here's this, this data that we've collected, and here's what we would like to see. I think, again, this is sort of based on Chris's suggestion. That we really wait to see how the first month or so plays out before we make any decisions. On whether we not, whether or not we feel like a communication consultant still has added value in the district. So the long and short of it is that we are holding off on a recommendation. We still have other conversations. Regarding sort of informational pieces, but that we're going to hold off until the subsequent meeting.
Thank you. New building committee report, Mr. Gleason? Okay, and Dear J, Elaine?
Thanks. So we meet again on Monday, so actually I have more details after that. But right now, we are kind of in research mode. We are doing our homework and really coming up or finding best practices for a few different things. That we can then use to have discussions and eventually bring forward some recommendations on things. So right now, we're looking at items such as land acknowledgements, which kind of ties in nicely. With a new mascot being announced just tonight. So the timing is pretty good on that one. And then we're also looking at best practices for equity audits. So that we have that information available and ready. And also using equity lenses or equity filters in decision-making processes for school committee decisions.
Thanks so much. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, Elaine?
Yes, I move to approve the consent agenda of April seventh, twenty twenty-one, containing the meeting minutes of March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. And the warrants of April ninth, twenty twenty-one.
You have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Leah seconded. Any questions or comments? Joseph?
I had a quick question, Madam Chairman, for Ms. Ronnie. How did the DocuSign work out? Did we, everything worked out okay with the DocuSign?
So far, so good. I believe everybody had signed. Is there anybody who hasn't or didn't get the email? You didn't sign yet? Mike?
No, remember, I've got a, I've got a, I've got a, like, I can't do that. Remember? Yeah, I just, I'm sorry. I saw it today. I just didn't get a chance to get.
Okay. Yeah, she, she responses very quickly, actually.
Shame on Mike. I might not have done it either yet.
I didn't do it either, but I will. I promise.
Okay, it's very easy, quick and easy. Okay, so we have a second and no questions. We entertain comments about the DocuSign. And so I will just go alphabetically to vote. Me, yes, Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah. Okay. Next agenda item, items to be considered for next in a future agenda. We have on the planning calendar Superintendent Evaluation. Executive Session Minute Review. Survey Results from the Pool Testing Poll. Is there anything else that we need to? I mean, I'm sure stuff will come up, but we'll have the committee reports. Mike?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have another meeting until May. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, a, a, and all but certain this goes through personnel. But I'm just wondering, and I'm also certain that there is, you know, a timeline for this. But at what point does the school committee get together to discuss? Final interview questions of the finalists?
Mary, do you have any information about that from Dorothy?
I, I don't yet, but that would seem to be later, Mike.
Well, certainly, but I, but again, if we're not looking until May, and that process is soon thereafter, it might be something to think about.
I don't think we need.
Trying to remember, Mike, how we did it the last time, and I can't. I, I don't know if it was part of a school committee meeting, Steve? Yes?
First of all, I don't think we need the Superintendent Evaluation. Since the Superintendent is leaving.
Well. There are state regulations that we have to follow. And so I, I, you may recall that at the beginning of the year, we had decided on a two-year process for Brooke. So Mary, if I'm not mistaken, we would just be getting a, a summary from Brooke, correct?
That is, that is correct, that, that Brooke would give us more or less a report, and we could give some feedback. But not, not in the formal way that anyone who's been on committee knows. You know, what that is and how extensive that is, because this would be the interim year. But it also seems to make sense, since Brooke is leaving, that I think that she would. She probably would very much like to be able to talk about things that have been accomplished in this. Extraordinary and extraordinarily challenging year. When so much has been able to be accomplished. So it's, it'll be much less formal, but that's what I, and I, and probably what Brooke was thinking that she might do anyway.
That's exactly, that was my thinking exactly, Mary.
Dorothy Presser to, to address your question, okay?
And if I could, yeah, if I could just go back to Mike's question. Certainly, we will have, we will have gone through the questions, the screening committee. And, and so, and gone through interviewing. And, and although I haven't talked to Dorothy about this, and the times that I've been part of this process. The, the questions that we might possibly bring to school committee as possibilities. Would have to do with what we had learned as a screening committee. And maybe be able to make some recommendations to, to school committee as school committee comes up with its questions. But I will talk to Dorothy about this.
Thank you, Mary. Amy, did you have a question? Okay. Leah?
So Mary, can you just clarify, we would be developing the questions in public sessions so that the candidates could know the questions?
I, I, I wouldn't think so. But I think that, and I'll talk to Dorothy about this. That's a really good point, Leah. But I think that general areas, we could, we could certainly talk about, and that's not going to be any secret to any. You know, candidate for, for superintendent. So we won't be telling any, any secrets at all. But that's, that's a good question. We wouldn't give the exact question. Because part of the fun is having some surprise questions, too. That really allow the, the candidates to be able to show us how she or he thinks on his or her feet.
I do have a question, Kathy, if that's okay. So this is a follow-up on Mike's question. I, I'm pulling up the roadmap for the superintendent search. Now I'm confused because I know we did talk about. The school committee developing interview questions for the superintendent. But I, I guess I thought that those were the questions that the screening committee was going to be asking. But they're the questions that we're going to be asking.
So we're talking about two different things. The, the, the screening committee will be coming up with its own questions. Dorothy will be guiding us, and, and so that's not a place for the school committee to give input into the kind of questions. The screening committee will come up with its own questions. I, I believe that Mike's talking later on when we have. Those finalists that the screening committee has delivered to the school committee. That's when. You know, questions, and I would, you know, I'm thinking out loud on this, but we could talk about general areas. But to Leah's point, we wouldn't come up with the exact questions. Because that, that would kind of spoil the fun.
Mary, if you could get clarification for that and bring it back to the May fifth meeting, that would be great.
I will.
Okay, thank you. Leah?
Very quick. So is this correct, that our next meeting is actually our last meeting of this committee?
Well, it's the last meeting before the town meetings and elections. So that's the end of our cycle.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. Yes, Rich?
I had something more for the good of the order. Is that appropriate now?
Depends on what it is.
I, I just wanted to say, it looks like Anne Marie left, but, oh, you're there. Oh, sorry, Anne Marie. I just want to say, I looked at your salary. I was one of the guy, people that was complaining before about how. We didn't have good salary data for the principal and all that stuff. And the fact that you went to fifty different plate towns to gather that information and categorized it. I thought you should, you could use a little kudos for that. I've turned around and put it into a spreadsheet so I can analyze it further, but. But good job, and thank you for.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you, thank you for doing it, in all sincerity. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there are no objections at this point. I, I, I guess that I all along have been supposed to be making the motion to go into executive session as the chair. So I will move to go in to executive session at seven forty-one P M. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A Three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And the Chair so declares, Unit A and Unit C. Executive Session to include Superintendent Clancy, Director of Human Resources. Anne Marie Stoika, and District Legal Counsel Attorney Mike McCarron. School Committee Member Brett Collins will be excused due to a conflict of interest. School Committee will reconvene to open session after the executive session. So could I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Steve seconds, and I will take the vote to go into executive session. Leah?
Sorry, yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes, but just a moment. Did I, did I miss that we would return to regular session at the close of the?
Yes, yeah, I did say that.
I missed it. Sorry.
Okay, Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike? Mike?
Yes, I thought I said yes. Sorry, yes.
Oh, no, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. You were looking up at the ceiling. I didn't know, you know, what was going on there. Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett, Brett is excuse. Amy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, so we are going into executive session.
Having adjourned from executive session and I want to announce that the school committee has ratified a one year agreement with both unit A and C of the NREA. This agreement carries over the terms of both units current collective bargaining agreements. These MOAs provide for a 1.5% cost of living increase effective July 1, 2021 and a 1% cost of living increase which will take effect at 11:59 p.m. on June 30, 2022. So this concludes our business for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:21. Who so moved? I can't see. Steve, Steve so moved, second?
I'll second.
Leah seconded. Okay, here we go. Leah?
Yes.
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me. Yes, we are adjourned and 2 hours 22 minutes. Way to go!
It's like a record!
All you nobles! We have, our next meeting is May 5. If there is anything important that we need to address, I will be in touch. But please enjoy a break from school committee and we'll see each other on the 5th if we don't run into each other sooner. Thank you so much for all your good work tonight. Goodnight, everybody. Thank you.